Paul Thompson.
Here.
Gurnat.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pleasure of vacation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public righteous stance, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted us to take an opportunity for a moment of silence for Carrie Orozco, a police officer that many of us, you'd have to live under a rock to not know who she is at this point or who she was. We had some serious issues this past week in our community with a number of violent acts that had occurred, and I just wanted us to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Carrie and in hopes for peace. Amen.
Thank you.
City Clerk certifies publication on the day record on May 29, 2015, noted for a pre-council and regular city council meeting June 2, 2015. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or unmute any electronic devices.
I would move to remove Agenda Item 27 from the consent agenda, move it to the front of the agenda prior to Agenda Item Number 5.
Speaker. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item Number 27 is moved up. Item Number 27 is resolution that City of Omaha adopt economic inclusion as a city priority, and that city departments are urged to include economic inclusion plans in professional services contracts and within bid specifications. We have an amendment of the whole which includes a later amendment of Councilmember Milton's.
Thank you. Public Carrying Number 27 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public carriers closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes. This resolution comes out of the meeting I believe we had in January this year where this council, I think each one of us spoke about doing something, letting our action actually, the rubber hit the road so to speak, in terms of enough of the talking about doing stuff to address high poverty, high crime issues and violence in our city, but to start to try new things. And since that time, there's been a number of us meeting regularly, including people here, and we've been trying to brainstorm on ideas on how we can address these things. And so, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that the community knows that we recognize the need to address high poverty, high crime through workforce development for adult and youth, through building contractor capacity, for the oftentimes overlooked or very small emerging small businesses that exist in our city that are struggling to get out, you know, a foothold in the bidding environment, as well as then to make economic inclusion a means for helping the city address these priorities. And there's been an impetus personally for me and an opportunity that I view through the upcoming 90-plus million dollar rapid water treatment plant that's coming to the South Saddle Creek and UNO Arena area as an opportunity I didn't want to see come and go without trying to do something. So I want to really thank the mayor for making Spencer Danner the Economic Inclusion, Deputy Chief of Staff for the city available in this process, Public Works Department, Marty Gray, Bob Stube, Heather Tippy Pierce, I think Jim Thiler, Thielar, I hope I'm not mispronouncing his name, the CSO project management team who all have been meeting to decide and discuss ideas for how this might come together. And so with this resolution, we're saying that if you are coming to the city as a contractor either on a professional services basis, contract over $100,000, or on a construction contract over half a million dollars, you will be included in your bid documents and responses required to have an economic inclusion plan, and you'll be scored on that as a part of your bid. And once the bids are awarded, it'll be included in your contract, and then once in the contract, there'll be a means of doing compliance. And that process hopefully will get introduced to the contracting community in the prime contractor environment this Thursday through some templates that have been developed for both professional services and for contractors. And we're not saying this is a perfect end-all-be-all. We'll learn as we go and want to give this a try. So for all those that were involved in this process, you have my thanks, particularly the team that's been meeting who had some very good suggestions, Councilmember Milton who had an idea for amendment that is reflected in the amendment as a whole. So when you can come together like this, it's not often, you have unanimity from seven of us with different perspectives on what priorities should be, but I think we can all agree that if you're going to do something as a city, it has to be a "we" effort, not a "me" effort, and that takes, you know, give and take. It takes commitment to see the bigger picture to try to get results. And hopefully, we can avoid situations like, or have arisen in our city lately as a result of violence, and whether they be Officer Orozco or Little Peyton. Those things are certainly tragedies that are horrific, and the damage they do to all corners of the city are immense. And hopefully, through economic inclusion and these efforts, we can begin to have the assistance of contractors and consultants in helping us address the goals of putting people to work who want to work, who live in high poverty areas in our city, and helping those businesses who are small and emerging small businesses have opportunities to build capacity and then participate in the city's bidding contract environment. This goes a step further. It also urges the development community, not mandates but urges, in working with the planning department, when you submit applications that involve TIF, Tax Increment Financing, we're urging you to consider including economic inclusion as a priority in your projects to help us achieve these goals. And so hopefully, in our economic development projects that involve TIF, we will also see these sorts of things. Again, it's not mandated. I think the legal parameters of the community redevelopment law might have made that challenging, but it would be a voluntary process that I hope that developers participate in, and I know there's one of the bigger ones in the community that's in the room here today. And I suspect, knowing him, that we might very well see him be one of the pioneers in his company. At least, that's my hope. So again, thank you colleagues, and I would ask for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Jerome. I think this was well thought out. I appreciate the work that you did, putting this together and calling this to the attention. And I look forward to some of the pilots that you're coming up with for that larger project. And I also, I did add on here, in case there are people out there that don't know, that the mayor did create kind of a new position, a deputy chief of staff for diversity and inclusion, which I think is very important. And I know, Councilman Gray, I've heard from you over and over, "Let's quit talking." We just, it's enough talk. We actually need to walk the talk. Well, Mr. Danner, I'm wondering if you would be willing to come down here, because I think you're the one that's going to be doing all the walking. At least, that's what we're looking forward to, and I know that it may be a fairly daunting task, but I think you've spent a lot of time, and I've looked at at least your initial economic inclusion plan, and I was wondering if you could at least tell us a little bit about what your thoughts are and what you plan to actually do and how you will work with the council and the community.
Absolutely. Spencer Danner, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak, and Councilman Milton really giving us an opportunity. Economic inclusion has been a struggle within the City of Omaha for many years, and I've only actually been in my position for three months now. So this was an issue long before I got in the office. However, what I will say is that not only myself, and I think Councilman Jerome said it great, individuals on this council, the Public Works Department, Parks and Planning have been absolutely phenomenal to work with. The CSO team has gone leaps and bounds of what they were able to do prior to the last few months and what they're doing today. In addition to that, not just with those departments, human resources and our human rights and relations team have also all worked very diligently on economic inclusion. This is not just a City of Omaha issue as far as our organization. I think all the owners that have attended some of the best practice meetings that we've had over the last two months have all said that economic inclusion has been their number one issue. There are members here in the audience today that have been part of those best practices meetings that have all said that they're committed to economic inclusion. One thing we want to ensure though, the same with the creation of the City of Omaha Strategic Plan for Economic Inclusivity, is that we can't go from zero to 60 overnight. It takes steps. But recognizing those steps and actually having measurable outcomes is extremely important, and benchmarks is extremely important. We cannot, as the City of Omaha, as prime contractors, general contractors, or any other owners in the city, to do what we are not wanting to do. So if we are wanting to do it, they will follow, and we, as the City of Omaha, have to be leaders in this. So that's why I took it upon myself, and with the mayor's blessing of hiring me in this position, that I wanted to make sure that the City of Omaha had a strategic plan. This is extremely backed by the mayor and the administration, and members of the council that I've met with independently and as a group, everyone agrees that economic inclusivity is important. So our number one goal right now is to increase the number of small emerging businesses that not only bid for contracts but also are getting awarded contracts. We can't just go out there putting arbitrary numbers out there just to make everyone feel good that we're doing the right thing. We have to find benchmarks that we're actually going to achieve those benchmarks and surpass those goals. And right now, I don't think that we've done that to this date. Today, we're putting a plan together that will be, that is expected to be completed by the end of the month, that will outline objectives, benchmarks, and solutions to ensure that it's sustainable after I leave this office, after the mayor leaves this office, after each one of you leaves. We have to have it sustainable. It makes no sense at all for us to put something in place now and then have it overturned two years from now saying that we didn't do enough today. We all want the same thing, and we all want to leave this city better than it was yesterday. And I believe this economic inclusion plan is a great start of that. I certainly appreciate Councilman Jerome and his work and his fortitude of pushing forward with this, but also, I do want to commend the mayor of actually sticking with this plan and not just saying something to be popular. I am not in the position to be a front face, because this is something I'm extremely passionate about and something that I truly care about. I am born and raised in North Omaha. I currently live in South Omaha. Both my kids go to school in North Omaha and South Omaha. I am part of neighborhood associations in South Omaha. It is extremely important that individuals realize that economic inclusivity is not a North and South Omaha issue. It is a City of Omaha issue, and I believe we are recognizing that today. And it's extremely important that everyone understands that this is not about affirmative action, this is not a reason to bring up race, this is not a reason to bring up anything else, and anybody to equate those together, to me, would be ill-advised. What this is about in all seriousness is to ensure the sustainability of this city. And every city in America that prospers when it comes to economics has inclusivity within their plan, period. And we are light years behind other cities. So with this economic inclusion plan, we're looking to increase participation in small and business, the small emerging business, partner with project owners to promote economic inclusivity. We're working with people like Omaha Public Schools, UNMC, Metro Community College, and many other prime contractors, subcontractors, trades, and unions all across the city. We're all working together for this. Identifying and support public and private partnerships to build education, training, and workforce development opportunities for all small and emerging businesses. We all want this. We all need this resource, this resource for everyone to be able to come together so that if there are remediation opportunities, if there are education or training opportunities, they all have access to that equally. Economic inclusivity is about equitable distribution of access to opportunity. That's all it is. And this is something that has long awaited in the city, and I think that now's the time. We have a more critical time than any time in the City of Omaha's history to make a difference, to unite this city altogether. And we're only going to be able to do that with the support of the mayor's office, the support of you as leaders of the community, the support of all the city department directors, and more importantly, the support of the community. This is not another government handout. This is not no kind of opportunity for them to take advantage of a plan that is not requiring them to meet us halfway. We're not knocking on your door and telling you, "Hey, it's time to go to work." We're not going down to your office and telling you, "Hey, I need you to bid on this contract." What economic inclusivity stands for is we have to be able to eliminate barriers that do not allow them to have equal access. And that's what this plan is going to do, and that's what we're going to do moving forward. And as long as the city does their part, we expect the community to do their part as well, meet us halfway, because we're all in this together, and we all want the same thing.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a direct correlation between poverty and violence. There's a direct correlation between the lack of education and violence. The reason I say that is because as Mr. Danner pointed out, this has to be a two-way street. Individuals in our community looking for work need to understand that times are changing and that more training in a lot of instances is needed, and there are training institutions that are available to do that. I will mention one, Metro Community College, and a number of things, and the number of programs that they're putting together. In addition to that, this council four years ago, or a little longer than four years ago, created, began the process of creating a one-stop shop with Hartman Workforce Solutions, so that there is an opportunity for people to at least find out what some of the latest job opportunities are, what some of the training that's available is, and the community has to, those who are seeking employment, need to step up and understand that this is not going to be a quick fix, but it is going to be an opportunity for individuals to receive training, to get on work, if they're a contractor, to gain work. This is an opportunity to do that. But on the other side of that, I have to say this. The community that I represent specifically is very tired, very tired of unkept promises. By that, I mean when the EPA and others came in and talked about what we were going to do with this lead superfund site, and how many jobs were going to be created, and how many companies we can form that will be new companies in our community. Same way, same way with community development block grant dollars over the years. In large part, the North Omaha community was used as the entity for which community development block grant dollars made their way here, but in a lot of instances, very few of those dollars, especially in the early parts of the year, early parts of this program, made their way into the area that was affected, that needed the, that needed the jobs, needed the work the most. So people are tired of empty promises. They want to, and I encourage people in the community, and I encourage the media, to hold us to what we say, keep us accountable, hold our feet to the fire, make us, and I don't know that you all are going to need to make some of us do that, because some of us have already been, you know, very deeply involved in trying to create opportunities for work and opportunities for contracting. But as Mr. Danner said, and I would echo his comments, this is a two-way street. The community has to meet us halfway, and in so doing, I think we can solve this problem. But again, it's not a quick fix. It's not going to happen overnight. But for those of us who are committed to making sure that something happens, committed to making sure that the economic inclusion, and economic inclusion is not a good idea. Economic inclusion is critical in this community. It is critical if we're going to get past some of the barriers and some of the issues that have faced us for years and in some instances, decades. We have a great opportunity at this point in time. I believe we ought to do everything possible to make sure that happens, and media and others need to make sure that we are accountable and making sure that we are feet are held to the fire to make sure that we get this done. It can be done. It can be done. We just have to have the will to do it, and I think the will is here now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to be a part of this, and I'm thrilled that it is a bipartisan effort. Not only am I going to be an ally, but I'm going to be a powerful ally for you. And when I say that, that means that I'm deciding to throw my head in the ring in a way that's going to really make a difference. Sometimes I only let you see a part of me because I'm waiting for something, and today is one of those areas that I think it's time to go ahead and step up, because I'm seeing something today. What I see today is the pushing aside of politics and really caring about who we're supposed to be serving, especially the children. Councilman Gray, you had mentioned the superfund site, and I remember being politicized back in 2003 or '04, whenever it was, and I was told not to vote to have the removal of lead in North Omaha. I provided the swing vote, got beat up by my party for doing so, didn't receive a thanks from the other party for doing so, but I always kept one thing in perspective, and that's that the children are first. And today, I see that that's an important part of what we're doing today. And so because I really feel that this is the real deal, not only will I become an ally, but I'll become a powerful ally. And when I say that, it can mean a lot. So I'm throwing my support behind it, and gentlemen, put me to work. Put me to work, let me know what to do. And I'm glad to see that we're doing this. Omaha has great potential, and sometimes we live beneath our potential. I know that Willie Barney often talks about us being a test city or a model city, and this is a doorway for us to accomplish that. Thank you, Mr. Danner, for highlighting the fact that this is not affirmative action. We're not saying that we're trying to get more of one color or another. We're saying poverty. And Mr. Jerome, I see you're labeling it economic inclusion. So that means poor people who need a chance. And I know what that's all about, because I went to Omaha, to North Omaha and Omaha Tech and doing the times when actually we were forgotten people. But this is a great opportunity. Let's do it. Let's do it the right way. Let's push politics aside, keep our attention on what really counts. That's the people who we serve, especially our children. We can do this. And gentlemen, you have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnat.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague, Mr. Jerome, mentioned an event that happened recently where Omaha lost one of its protectors. We also lost one of our children. Mr. Gray continually reminds Omaha about one word that is, sometimes we don't want to hear that's poverty. And I'm glad he does. We have, I'm in eastern part of the city, we have pockets all around the city that can match that definition. In regards to our recent loss, when Mr. Jerome mentioned that, it sparked a term that in my other life, you never, ever wanted to hear those five words, and that's "help an officer, officer down." Before us today is a tool that my colleague to the right and a whole host of individuals got together, hopefully in a non-smoke-filled room, and talked, and talked, and talked, and came up with a plan, an EIP, Economic Inclusion Plan. And it has pilots in it. It's been mentioned that maybe it's not perfect, but we've got to continue to put action in front of just words. And I believe this EIP does that, and that's why I'm supporting it. So the next five words that I hear out of people's mouths is "help an issue poverty down." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'd just conclude by making Councilman Jerome and Councilman Gray for their leadership on this issue, and really pressing the envelope on this issue for the last, really, a year, almost two years, when some of the responses we got back on city contracts and combined sewer or flow funding and those contracts weren't good enough. And sometimes, in a very public way, they've taken the leadership on this issue to get where we are today. As Mr. Danner noted, there was no deputy chief of staff for economic inclusion until just a few months ago. I think that's now come out of some of these discussions too. We're pleased to work with that position, and pleased to be working with him going forward. And as he notes, we're still on the front end of that new effort, and I think we need to realize that too, and that we need to continue to review the elements of what that plan will be and the resources dedicated to it, maybe more importantly, will be critical to making this successful, because I continue to believe, as everyone else has said too, that working on Omaha's poverty and unemployment issues is probably the most important thing we can be doing for the future of our city. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Most approuved.
Roll call.
The amendment of the whole.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
The amendment of the whole, 27, been adopted 7 to 0. Go back to the regular agenda. Item Number 5, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for West Greyhawk to allow for the reconfiguration of the required plaza and open space area within the development located southwest 147th Street and West Maple Road, providing site development standards. AA Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public Carrying Number 5 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Council. Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of Royce Greyhawk LLC, the developer of the West Greyhawk subdivision. This is an amendment to the existing mixed-use agreement, and the repli of a couple of lots to adjust, to make some adjustments for the shopping center. Be happy to answer any questions. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Again, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bujer. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public Carriers closed.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed 7 to 0. Item Number 6, Resolution of Plymouth Platinum titled "The cottages of Oakdale addition a cluster subdivision inside city limits located at 9515 West Center Road along attached conditions except preparation and final plaid is hereby authorized. AA Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public Carrying Number 6 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Kent Barash with Essex Corporation here in Omaha, Nebraska, and we're here today to answer any questions that you may have on this issue.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is adopted seven to zero. Liquor, item seven and nine will take together. Seven is HOB Incorporated DB Report Inn Pub, 12100 West Center Road, Suite 204, Class C liquor license, no application, no location. And nine is resolution that the same applicant is granted approval, well, bigger red is granted approval to operate a satellite kennel location at that same location.
Public hearing on number seven and nine are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Kennel. We're located 11248 John G. Bullard. I have with me today Helen. She's the owner of the Report Inn, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Helen, you don't have any problems with when you're letting out having to disperse a crowd, do you?
No, not at all. I don't have much of a crowd.
Go ahead and identify yourself.
Oh, my name is Helen Atbrash. I'm the president and owner, manager of Report Inn.
And so do you use any security guards?
No, we don't. Currently, our crowds, when we let out, are three or four people.
Okay, all right. And there's no problems with the businesses that are left and right of you? They don't have any complaints?
No, sir.
Okay, move the approval.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven and nine are adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Ninth Street Joint Venture DBA Local Beer Patio and Kitchen, 902 Dodge Street, Suite 101, Class C liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Charles Yen. I'm a partner in Ninth Street Joint Ventures, doing business as Local Beer Patio and Kitchen.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Okay. See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Jerem has left the chambers. Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight is adopted six to zero.
All right, thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council, mccollum, and I placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken out by City Council committee following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by City Council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items number 10 through 12 are held on May 19.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
10 through 12 are passed seven to zero. We have a request to remove item 14 from the consent agenda. Chris said go ahead with 13.
Okay. Public hearing on agenda items number 13 and 14 through 26 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items.
15 through 26.
15 through 26, sorry. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none, public hearings are closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
13 and 15 through 26 are adopted six to zero. Item number 14, resolution of contract with LG Roloff Construction Company Incorporated for OPW 52184 CSO being Gilmore Avenue Sewer Separation Project is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 14 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Gray.
Hi, I'm Marty Gray, Public Works Department.
He's here to answer. Here for questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Can tell if you're waiting for the visual Pope there or not. Are there any other proponents here today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marty, could you please explain for our visual audience what the green initiatives part of this $9.9 million project is, if you would, please?
Yeah, this is a pretty classic sewer separation project as part of our CSO program, the federal mandate. The idea is to take storm water and get it out of our combined system so it reduces the amount of sewage overflows during rainstorms. One of the unique aspects of this program is that it crosses over into Bellevue and Sarpy County, and so we have work going on in both counties because of the way topography is and the water drains during rainstorms. But the point that you were asking about was our green initiatives. And one of the things that we challenge our engineering design consultants to do with every project is to look for opportunities to, instead of building more or bigger pipes, to look if there's a way we can keep water from getting into the sewer to begin with or finding ways to get it into a separate system so it's not part of our sewage overflow. The picture that I've got up here on the screen is of Albright Park. And this park is an area where we saw, or our design team saw, an opportunity to hold some of this water, hold it back, and keep it out of the sanitary sewer system. And that's kind of this area here where you see the kind of wooded. The other thing that we did was we coordinated with our parks department to take what was a relatively underutilized softball field and instead look at a conversion of that project. The design that was ultimately established for this did provide in this area some detention of storm water to keep it out during rainstorms, and then also the construction of two new soccer fields in that area. And this is one of those win-win sort of projects where in addition to improving water quality, we actually found a way to save money as opposed to what our initial plan was. We're going to spend about $150,000 in order to construct some of these improvements here, but we're going to be able to save $450,000 because we can use smaller pipes that we put in the ground. So we've got a net savings of $300,000, and we believe that we've got amenities here that will go above and beyond the water quality mandate and actually provide community benefits.
The reason I took this off, for the benefit of those that are in my district that were so concerned about the loss of park land, there was a rumor going around to that effect. So I wanted our, at least our visual audience, to understand that we're not losing a park, we're gaining a better park, and at the same time, saving some money with a green initiative as opposed to, as you normally put it, a concrete solution. So with that, I appreciate taking the time and indulging of my colleagues in doing this. Is there anything else that Public Works can share at this time regarding this project, say, as far as a timeline?
We expect to start construction yet this spring, or I guess it's summer now, but very shortly, and then completion will be in 2017 is our current plan.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Gray, you talked about a retention pond. On an average, how much in terms of volume, gallons, whatever, will that pond hold?
You know, I don't have those fingers in my head. I can certainly get that information to you. There was, in conjunction with the resolution document itself, kind of a little memo at the end of it that contained some of those numerics on what we're able to do. But again, what it allowed us to do was originally, we thought we were going to have to have an 84-inch, which is a very large pipe, and by holding this water back on the surface, we were able to downsize that to 60 inches. So we go from 84 inches to 60 inches, and obviously, there's a reduction in price in terms of both the commodity of the pipe and the installation with that move.
Just describing the logistics of how that works, you retain it and then slowly release it into the sewer, or does it get absorbed by the ground?
It's kind of both. There certainly is some water that infiltrates into the ground that never comes back, but there also is a component during a heavier rainstorm that maybe can't all infiltrate, but it decreases what we call the peak flow. And again, that allows us to use smaller pipe because we're extending the period of the draining that happens.
And then is it then slowly released from that pond?
Yes.
Okay. So there's sort of like an outlet valve or something that?
Yeah. And again, Councilman Gernat kind of alluded to it. The last thing that we want to do is take our parks and create a bunch of mud holes. And so what we do in designing these projects is make sure that in areas where we hold this water, that it doesn't stand there long enough to where it kills all the vegetation, that it really is a temporary thing that allows us to, some economies and also some improvements in water quality.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, Marty, if you can, is there any opportunities for SEB, SEB work in this contract? It's a rather large contract.
I don't, again, I don't have those numbers in my head. There is some SEB money in it, but this was in the chute prior to our Economic Inclusion Plan requirements, so it doesn't include that. But it did certainly have some SEB participation.
Okay. Any opportunities for training in that at all or not?
I think the dialogue that we have going with the contractors and with Heartland Workforce Solutions, I think there's always opportunities for that. I can't provide you with any specific commitment, but the contractors that we've been talking with recently are anxious to establish, you know, some training opportunities and work in that direction.
Yeah, and I understand this in its infancy, but, you know, I just wanted to, you know, check and see where we are at this point and just as we move forward to keep it on people's mind.
Yeah, and this actually is kind of one of those last projects that was already in the queue, already kind of designed up before we took this recent step that we took earlier today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Mr. President.
It was already in the pipeline. No pun intended.
First motion, second.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
14 is adopted six to zero. Item number 20, resolution and attached 1702 Cummings Tax Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the site located at 17020814 Cummings Street, which contemplates rehabilitation of the 1702 Cummings Street building to accommodate two restaurant tenants and the demolition of the adjoining buildings to the west to provide surface parking, recommending the city participate through TIF financing is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 28 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. This particular project is in and around the north downtown area, as you can see by this aerial Cummings Street here, 17th Street, and this is headed north. The aerial, or site outlined in the blue, is the site in question. This project represents a great opportunity for more retailing in the particular area. It will, it is the current performer site of the GF Bloom Company, has some historic characteristics of this particular site. These structures that you see directly to the west will be and have already been demolished as proposed in the plan to allow for parking and a site plan, preliminary site plan presented with the TIF application gives you a better outline of what the finished site layout would look like. What's proposed are for two retail tenants to be there. It happens to be a great opportunity for a particular tenant that was down the street at 24th and Cummings, which had to relocate, and that's the China Taste Restaurant that plans to be one of the occupants in this particular structure, which is the former GF Bloom Company site. This particular project will begin to eliminate some of the longstanding blighted and substandard conditions along the Cummings Street corridor. It supports the development of commercial retail activities envisioned in the North Omaha Village Revitalization Plan. It will help to provide needed additional retailing and dining options close to the entertainment and sports activities occurring in north downtown, and it will also help to redevelop or hopefully stimulate more redevelopment in this particular area, causing true revitalization along the Cummings Street corridor. It represents about a little over 217,500 in TIF and an estimated total project cost or investment of a little over 1.5 million. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
28 is adopted six to zero. Item number 29, resolution attached H2O Tax Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2100 Douglas Street, proposing the construction of a new four-story, 114-unit market rate multifamily structure with apartment amenities, recommend city participate through TIF financing is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 29 is today. Proponents, please.
This particular project, a free development project, is, as you see outlined in the blue on this aerial, it is taking up one of the several surface parking lots that you see in our downtown area. It is going to be, or rather is considered Phase Two of the Highline project, which is located right here. It will be a part of the Highline complex. There will be 114 new apartment units in this particular, at this particular site between Phase One, Highline, the first project which was completed about a couple of years ago, the rehabilitation of that site. And this particular project will create about a 50/50 ratio or a mix of one and two bedrooms throughout the entire complex. Again, this utilizes a former vacant, very underutilized surface parking lot that had been probably that way since the 70s and will bring more activity into the area. It will help to strengthen the residential fabric of downtown. It supports the 2030 Downtown Master Plan to, as well as the Jocelyn Neighborhood Housing Study, to add more residential density into the area. Again, it will, there will be less underutilized surface parking lots in the downtown area, which can often lead to a perception of blight and definitely promote much-needed economic activity. The parking that will be, that is not a part of this project because this is only going to involve apartment units and a few apartment amenities, as such as a swimming pool, but the parking garage that is directly to the west that is a part of Phase One will be shared by this particular project. So a great combination of the two. This project does involve about a little over 2.6 million in TIF and an estimated total project cost or investment of 16,700,000. And with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, again, Bridgette, thank you for these urban infill projects that you bring to us. Very, very important, and it was the prime example of why we went with the TIF legislation to begin with. And just, we need more of this, and thank you for that. And with that, I move the motion.
Thank you.
A motion to approve.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
29 is adopted six to zero. Item 30, resolution attached, the ones at 35th and Dodge Tax Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the site located at 111 North 35th Street and 3412 2024 Dodge Street, which contemplates demolition of existing single-family structures and the new construction of a four-story apartment structure with lower-level underground 22-stall parking area, recommend the city's participation with the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 30 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon again, Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. This particular project involves a newer applicant to the TIF program, Mr. John Cunnigley,
Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, again, Bridgette, thank you for these urban infill projects that you bring to us. Very, very important, and it was the prime example of why we went with the TIF legislation to begin with. And just, we need more of this, and thank you for that. And with that, I move the motion.[1523.35]